Thanks for coming out tonight, everybody. We'll start with the pledge.
(Inaudible)
My pledge is to live life in the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, other God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, thanks for coming out. So we'll start with item number one, approve the agenda. Any additions, deletions, corrections? Teresa, anything?
No, I do not.
Dan? Wait. No. No else? Hearing none, entertaining motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Thanks to Andy, do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Thanks, Dan. All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion passes. On the consent agenda, everything is in your packet. Are there any questions for the administrator on the consent agenda or the finance director? No. Entertaining motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make the motion.
Thanks to Nani, do you have a second?
I'll second.
No, all in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries. Number one, visitors to the council, Ben Call, potential developer.
Hi, guys.
Welcome.
Can I sit here or should I stand up?
Oh, you're fine. You want to get together.
Besides, you got to be in the middle.
You can't really see the slides as you're kind of way, but I'll sit right behind you.
Well, my name is Ben Call and I just wanted to thank everyone for giving us, myself and our team, the opportunity to be here tonight and kind of present an opportunity that we were, have kind of known about over the years, but within the last month or so, when I stopped in to talk with Stephanie in the CETA department, we were made aware of a good housing opportunity. So we've been working pretty diligently over the last four weeks to come up and be here tonight in front of you guys to propose that six acre redevelopment, which could potentially be a mixed use site here in Cassin, just east of the post office. So to kind of get started and give a little background on us, the first is Adam Van Ork. He's part of our team. He's a local volleyball coach here in town. He's owned a small business in Cassin since 2012. And Dirk Erickson, Dirk and I actually coached football at John Marshall High School in Rochester and know each other for quite a few years. His background, his family has built and developed townhomes in the area for many, many years. I am a licensed real estate agent, own a property management company, and I've managed properties throughout Rochester, Cassin, and Dodge County. So we have a good idea of the need for a product like this throughout Dodge County and specifically Cassin. So we think an opportunity like the one that we're going to be talking about a little bit further is not only going to assist in helping solve a housing shortage that's in front of us, but we also think it's going to create a positive impact on the community with job growth and economic spending. So one of the big things that we looked at that Stephanie made me aware of is that Dodge County has just funded a comprehensive market study done by Maxfield. Maxfield is very reassuring for us because they're one of the top respected groups across the country for developers. So these next few sites are just a couple of things that really stood out to us while we reviewed that market study, but it really also aligns kind of things that we've seen in the community over the last few years managing multifamily products in the area. The very first thing that was just glaring to us is that Dodge County, as a county, has a 1.2% vacancy rate. Throughout Rochester and across the nation, the norm is 5%. So that just tells us that there's a lot of pent up demand for housing, be it affordable or market rates, or for sale homes in the area. And so with the pent up demand, one of the things that we've seen is that when a tenant does find a unit, they're going to stay there for many, many years because they're afraid they're never going to find something. So when I searched today, I looked through all the different avenues where you can find something, and I found two apartments for rent in all of Dodge County today. That's pretty severing and hard for people to find things. And I work with a lot of relocation companies that will call us just because we're landlords and property managers looking to find place because staffing with some of the employers around the area, and they always complain that it's a struggle to find housing. So one of the first things that the market study showed us is that over the next six to 15 years, this is just a list of what they think there may be a need for. So the thing that stood out to us the most is that there's going to be a need for 199 market rate rental units within the next six years, what they projected. So when we started looking at population trends, it's pretty well known that the east submarket, or Cassin, is growing at a much faster pace than some of the other submarkets in Dodge County. But since, between 1990 and 2010, the population has doubled in Cassin. And if we look at projections moving forwards, and I'll share this with everyone if I talk fairly fast, but looking at projections between the next few years, it's projected that Cassin in the east submarket may grow at an 11% rate. So that could mean the population's going to double again in the near future. So when we start looking at current construction trends and the current housing stock for rent or for sale, the things that really stand out to us is that a lot of the new construction has been in the east submarket and a lot of that has been single family homes. And there have not been many permits gone out for multifamily throughout the county. So as I mentioned, we work with relocation companies, but one of the things, again, that stood out in the market study is that they interviewed a lot of, or not a lot, but a few of the employers in the area, and one of their concerns was housing because when they look for recruiting talent and to place employees here to grow businesses in the area, it's hard. Once you get an employee here, when they start looking for housing, there's nothing within the area. So they're driving to Claremont, Rochester's too expensive. We have a lot of people that actually will look here and then live in Owatonna because that's the next closest area, and then they have to drive all the way down here. So the expansion of 14, we think, is also going to be really positive. So when we start looking at current rental trends, comparing it to what we've seen personally over the last few years and comparing it what to the market study showed, it's pretty much exactly spot on from what we saw. So if you look at this middle column right here, it kind of talks about the average rental rates for studio one or two bedroom apartments. And basically what that's saying is that for a one bedroom apartment, prices go as low as $500 and for two bedroom apartments, they go up to about $750. And that's really in line for the products that we're currently managing in our portfolio. So again, this slide just shows that the average rental rate for all the different rental housing in Dodge County is between $666 and $695 per month, and that specifically there's the biggest need or the majority of these rentals are one and two bedroom products. But the thing that stood out the most to us is at the bottom that's highlighted that says the market rate rental products had a meeting year built in 1977. So a lot of these products are almost 50 years old, and as you can imagine, rental properties get beat up and you have to stand top of them if you want to offer a nice product and a great place for someone to live. So 50 year old product, and that's the average year built, that just says it could be time for an opportunity like the one that we're going to be discussing here in a second. So when we started to put together a vision for what we could present as a project, we started looking at what would be a good unit mix if we're going to build an apartment building. So one of the things that we started to look at is these numbers right here for the one and two bedroom units. So basically, 39% of the rental needs are in one bedrooms and 47% are two bedrooms. And at the bottom, it kind of talked about the average rental ranges for these types of units. And so that's really important for us as developers because if we're going to be building a building, obviously, we would like to fill it, but we also want to service the need that is the most needed within the area. So again, this slide kind of sums up the summary of the market study that, right here, it states that according to Maxfield, that we're going to need roughly 291 total rental units. That's market rate, that's affordable, that's houses, that's apartments throughout Dodge County just in the next six years, in that they recommended that there's going to be a need for 199 market rate rental units through 2025. So there's a lot of construction, according to the market study, that needs to be done to be able to withstand that demand with the growth in the area. And so their recommendation is that part of the growth and to help support that growth is to start with market rate apartments to help with transitions of month to month when someone just moves here looking for, to buy a home, or they're just here on a six month to a year contract with an employer, and then they're moving out. So they think that creating apartment rents could help solve some of the issues while we continue to develop and build single family homes. So when we decided this is a really good opportunity for us to present the product, one of the things that we did is looked at, the recently adopted comprehensive plan. And obviously, we want to try to conform as much as we can with the future of Dodge County and specifically Cassin. So one of the things that we looked at is the future land use map and where we think a product like this would fit best. So when I was working with Stephanie with CETA, the first thing she brought up was the ShopCo site, right? So obviously, that's going out of business. It's for sale. We just came to the quick conclusion that's probably not the right site for something like this, just because it would be probably too difficult and hard to retrofit for something like we're going to be proposing. So just being in town, I stopped at the post office and was heading over to one of our other businesses, and I saw a little Better Homes and Gardens sign on the side of the road, and I forgot that's real estate and that means it's for sale. So I looked into it a little bit more, and it turns out that this site is actually for sale. So this is the old Hinderman concrete site that's just east of the post office. It's a total of three parcels, which equals about six acres. So this top parcel that's kind of outlined is really the one that we're focusing on. And then a portion of the second two parcels are just south of the creek, and those are really unbuildable for us in the meantime. But looking at the comp plan, if the trail system's ever built, it would be a great amenity for potential tenants and people who are going to be living here. So with looking at the site, obviously, to transition it from what it currently is to this is going to be quite the product and project. So what we're proposing and kind of what our vision is, is to start with phase one, which would be just this very first building right here, and then our detached real garages. And then because this site is so big, if the demand stands, we have a very large site, so we would have room to build another building on the south side of the lot. So I can go back to this image, but basically, our first phase, what we're thinking of building is a three story building, which would consist of about 45 to 55 market rate apartments. The building would consist of one and two bedroom units. All of these would have appealing designs, quality materials. We're aiming for stainless steel appliances, some of the more trendy things that you're seeing in new buildings across the country and in Rochester. And one of the big things we really want to accomplish as well is to have in unit laundry in every single apartment. That's kind of the way of the future and how things are going right now, and a lot of our tenants, they don't carry quarters anymore, so it's hard to walk down the hallway and use laundry. So that's one of our big goals, is to create something that's really appealing, not only for the tenants that are living there, but also for the city and also us as development owners. So we really want to focus on the design, the quality of the materials, obviously, safety for the tenants and everyone that's living there, but also being in that land use area, we know that we can get them connected to trail systems, and it's very easy to get to Main Street and then hop on 14 if they're commuting back and forth. So phase two, our initial vision would be, once we hit 90% occupancy in our first building, we would start construction on our second building. Right now, we're not entirely sure what that looks like, but looking at the market study, with 199 market rate rentals needed in six years, that may be a good fit. The other option and thing that we're learning a little bit more about is the option for senior housing. The numbers for senior housing in the market study were a little bit more staggering than the needs for market rate rentals. Our background is not in senior housing, but we're willing to learn very quickly if this opportunity presents itself. So one of the goals is to use the market study's projections for fair housing market rate rents. So our goal, if we can do this project, is to have one bedroom rents at $655 a month and two bedrooms at $860 a month. That's well below Rochester, but is significantly higher than some of the other products in the area. We think with a brand new building and some of the amenities, that this is very, very possible, but there hasn't been a project like this in the area, maybe ever. But we really do think that these numbers are very attainable. We don't think that one bedroom, we can charge 1,300 bucks a month like Rochester and people are going to be happy about that. So that's not our goal. That's not what we think is realistic. So we are already under contract with the owners on this site. We officially went under contract with them on Sunday. We've hired a local architect already that's put together these renderings for us. We've hired an engineering company to start working on civil, structural, and site plans out of Rochester. And one of the first things that we just found out yesterday, unfortunately, is that a portion of this lot, you can see these very blurred lines, but these lines are the 50 and 100 year flood zone. So that's a big bummer because about three acres of the site might be unbuildable, but there's a few discrepancies, so we're really hopeful because some of the overlays and maps with FEMA and that we've found online don't align correctly, so we still feel very, very hopeful that this is a good opportunity. Obviously, this used to be a concrete site, so we're still have some unknowns with environmental conditions and soil worries, but we're getting estimates right now and should have some of those environmental tests completed in the next couple of weeks. So kind of to conclude with some of the recommendations from Maxfield and then also our findings is that there's obviously the need for it, and hopefully, we can, hopefully there's a need and it's hopefully a project that we can accomplish. But the unfortunate part is with construction costs right now and some of the issues with developing a product like this, specifically a market rate product that isn't 100 unit building, we think that there is potential for a public and private partnership. We're not far along enough to figure out if there is a gap that needs to be met, but we do know just based off seeing some other things that it could be a possibility in the future if we continue forwards with this and really dial in some numbers and look at some projections. But if we think we're able to do this, we think we're going to be able to provide a quality product that will serve the community for decades to come. Obviously, there's a lot that needs to be accomplished in the next six years to meet those demands if the city continues to grow. And we're all former college athletes, so we're pretty aggressive with timelines. But we've been meeting with the CETA and the individuals within the city the last month or so, kind of right here. We're introducing the project tonight, and we're going to continue working with architects and engineers to figure out all of these different conditions over the next couple of months to see if we truly have a project on the specific site. And then if things still look promising from there, we would hopefully start to finalize some of our building plans over the summer into early fall. And then the ultimate goal, if it's at all feasible, would to be, to break ground on this project late this fall and hopefully have this facility open by fall or early winter of 2020. That's, again, very aggressive, and we don't know if it's attainable, but our ultimate vision is to stay very positive about this opportunity. We hope everyone is excited about it and sees that there's a need like we do. So again, we're just hoping to introduce this concept and proposal, and we're definitely open for thoughts or questions after the meeting is through today. And I did bring printout to some of these renderings so you guys can get a better idea that I can leave here afterwards as well. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. Any questions?
Questions at this time?
Thanks for the presentation. If you can make this happen, you'll be fulfilling a huge need in our community, so it's definitely needed.
Yeah.
Well, thank you very much. Keep working with the administration and planning zoning, and CETA's a good resource.
Okay.
Well, thank you, guys. Alright, thank you very much. Appreciate your time. Next up for visitors, we have the exciting one. Mike, provide it.
What was that? Was it?
This is the best topic we'll hear about in years.
Okay. I actually have another item on the agenda as well. Is that directly after this thing?
Yes, it's directly after this.
Okay, I'll stay parked up here. So good evening. Thanks for having me here. Actually, there's not really much to present on the refunding. We looked at, periodically, we look at all our clients' debt, see if there's any opportunities to refinance at lower rates and lower payments. And so we looked at the bond issue, the tax increment bond issue associated with the ShopCo slash Folkstead projects, and looked like we had an opportunity. But we're also sitting on a bunch of cash in your debt service fund as a result of not doing a full project at Folkstead, and so that money was sitting there, as well as we had a lot sale recently, and so was about $900,000 of cash.
Yeah, well, and we sold the Folkstead building.
Oh, that was it. And you sold the Folkstead building. That's what it was. And those bonds are not callable, so you can't take that money and prepay those bonds at this time. But what I looked at was, what if we took as much cash, do what we call an advanced refunding? An advanced refunding is not available for most bond issues anymore because with the Tax Reform Act, tax exempt bonds, we can't do that. But this is a taxable bond. It was done because it was for private activity. So we could do a bond issue today, set it on the shelf, and it would just sit there until those existing bonds became callable, and then it would pay off the old bonds, and then you'd have new bonds at lower payments. Well, when we came across all the money that you've got sitting there, basically, the refinancing added some savings, but it was like 10 grand. All of your savings was almost all due to the fact you had all this cash. So basically, Nancy and I said, why don't you just sit on the cash till the call date? Invest it as high as you can. Unlike most debt service funds where you have tax exempt bonds, you're not allowed to arbitrage. You're not allowed to earn more on your reserves than what you're paying on the bonds, but these are taxable bonds, so you can invest that money at the highest rate you can find. And then when the call date comes off, just call us and free of charge, we'll help you prepay as much of that bond as you can. You'll save more money probably that way. So we have an agenda item we probably could have like...
Yeah, no, and just to remind, that cash can only be used for that.
Correct.
You can't use it for any other, it has to be used for either refunding it or paying them off or whatever.
Yeah, because when you issue bonds and you have unused proceeds, in the covenants, you'd find that money in the debt service fund belongs to the bondholders. They get first dibs. So that's correct. You can't use it for a fire truck.
Perfect. Thank you for that. And I just have one thing before we get to the next agenda item. Public forum, and I didn't have any cards turned on me. Do you have any cards turned on?
No.
Okay, alright. Onto public hearing, tax abatement. Do we need to open the public hearing? Right away? Okay, we'll open the public hearing.
Very good. So the city has been approached by a developer who's looking to take a piece of ground, subdivide it into 22 lots, and through that process, they found that there's some deficient soil conditions need to be addressed. This is an extraneous cost that most developments don't have to deal with. Developers feel that if they have to cover those costs, that's going to cause their lots to be out of their target price range. So they've asked the city for some assistance, and the first thing that we considered was tax increment financing. That was quickly discarded only because since it's bare ground, the type of TIF district we would create would be a housing TIF district, and it would be subject to income limits. So they would have to sell these homes to families of somewhere between $84,000 and $96,000 a year, depending on the family size, in order for those lots to qualify. And while you certainly could find people to buy these lots in that income range, you're not guaranteed to do so. So it became sort of a burden for the developers, and they didn't have interest in that. So we segued into a different tool, tax abatement. When we use terms like TIF and tax abatement, let's not be confused, we're just talking about property taxes. All we're talking about is taking the new taxes that'll be generated from the development and for a period of time, instead of having it go to snow plowing and police protection like it normally would, we separate it and we jam it back into the project to help it out. So TIF would do that, tax abatement will do that. The main difference, two main differences, one is with tax abatement, no income limits. Sell whoever you want. But unlike TIF, where you get all the city taxes, all the county taxes, and some of the school taxes, with an abatement, each taxing jurisdiction can decide whether they want to be involved or not. We've made a request for the county to cooperate. We knew they were going to decline. They had said a while back that they've kind of taken an adverse position to the use of tax abatement. We did not make a request to school simply because if there are Y's, they would decline. It has to do with their state equalization aid and so forth, they would muck around with their taxes. So we're talking about a city alone tax abatement. Now, the developers are looking for what we call upfront assistance. This is a, it's a risk position for the city. So what we do is we look at the future value of those new taxes, decide what's, what it's worth today, and basically, you cut a check upfront today, here, Mr. Developer, that's for your soil work, and then you hope the homes are built and the new taxes are generated to pay yourselves back plus interest. So the abatement that we're dealing with, we decided to structure in a manner that would better protect the city than just the simple way I presented it just now. Couple of things would be involved. One would be, these 22 lots need to be built, homes need to be substantially completed by October 1st, 2023. So 22 new homes. These might be townhomes, patio homes, whatever. The reason we say October 1st of 2023 is because, to the extent homes are not built by that date, the developer will agree to sign a waiver and petition to have costs assessed to the unbuilt lots. So while we're expecting tax abatement to fully repay us for the check upfront plus interest, to the extent it doesn't, we put special assessments on the remaining lots, and we give them 10 years to repay that. So that's a protection. What's the amount? The amount is up to $200,000. It's not a guarantee, $200,000. Basically, they have to provide you evidence that the correction of the soils equals up to $200,000. So if they can only provide you $150,000 of invoices, that's the amount of the check. If it's $300,000, it's 200 grand, okay? Technically, if you read the documents I provided, both in the tax abatement plan and in the development agreement that Melanie had put together, you'll actually see, while we're using the soils corrections as the basis for the check, on paper, we're reimbursing them for public improvement expenses of road utilities. And the reason we're doing that swap is because we don't have the legal authority to specially assess for soil correction. That's really private activity on ground that's going to be sold to other parties, private parties, homeowners. But we can assess for roads and utilities. So we use these corrections of the soils as the basis for the number, for the amount of the check, but technically, we're reimbursing them for public improvement expenses. In your agenda packet, you should have a tax abatement plan, right? In the back of that plan, exhibit two, is sort of a projection of what that abatement might be worth. By law, we're allowed to go 15 years on an abatement. But if we ask a different county government, or county or school government to cooperate and they decline, which has happened, we can extend that to 20 years. So I'm suggesting a full 20 years here. But if you look at exhibit two, you'll see, we expect to get our $200,000 plus 5% interest before 20 years are up. The reason I advise the full 20 years is to give yourselves as much time as possible to recover your costs in case unforeseen events don't happen, right? So we have those additional years if we need them further. I base these projections on a taxable value of $150,000 a piece, and I think the developers would tell you they expect the taxable value to probably be over 200 grand a piece. So I think I've done a couple of things here. I've given you more years than you need, and I've based the projections on probably less value than what each home might actually get taxed on. And then you couple that with the special assessments and the petition and waiver. It's not a perfect protection, but it gives you some cushion. In the development agreement, you'll also find the provision that regardless of ownership, when we decide, okay, it's October 1st of 2023, there may be lots that have been sold to other parties who have not built homes. Those homes, those empty lots will still be subject to an assessment. And the reason that provision is in there is, as I thought about this, if I was a developer and I was getting close to October 1st of 2023, and I haven't built my homes, I'm going to quickly sell my lots to all my brothers and sisters, and so I don't own any of the lots, and then I can't be assessed. So basically, the developer will have to disclose there's a pending assessment on this lot unless you get a home built before October 1st of 2023. And if you ask why October 1st, 2023, why it seems an odd date, that's because you need to certify assessments by mid-November so that the assessments can kick in in 2024. So we've given you a month and a half cushion to arrange for certifying the assessment of it. Have I missed anything? Have you been listening? Why don't I stop there and see if I can take questions? Why don't I stop there and see if I can take questions?
Okay, so 100% of the city tax would go to?
Yourselves.
Correct, to pay back the loan.
Correct.
And where does the $200,000, the $200,000 come from?
Well, probably from our revolving loans.
Okay. And what do we have in our revolving loan fund now?
Um, 900.
Melanie, anything you think I missed or I covered most of it on this?
I thought you did a beautiful job explaining it.
Oh, gosh. I'll pay you afterwards.
Any questions for?
Oh, I should point out, by law, there's a maximum amount you can abate in any given year. It's in the plan, but you're well under that. You've got way tons of capacity. So if you have another abatement project come along, rest assured, you've got the capacity to deal with it. I forgot to mention that.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Okay, the public hearing is open. If anybody has any comments or questions or proof, we're going to step up to the podium and.
You don't have to.
Tony Pecalo, thanks for considering this. We're looking into this. We did get new bids, I want you to know that. So we need to read the development agreement a little more closely, but we understand the dates and how this works. I just want to say we'll do our best to do it right. And I don't see any way we wouldn't sell out the units by 2022 or whatever the date is.
2023.
2022. We'll be more aggressive. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, any comments on the project, concerns? What's the city's history doing, I mean, as far as tax abatement? Just a year, it's been around this year a long time.
Well, I can recall back when I was in your position that we had at least one tax abatement project. But at that time, I believe the school signed on also. Yeah. So it's been done and I think it worked just fine. But I can't tell you beyond that how many other times that I'm aware of.
Two.
Two current.
Two current, yeah.
I didn't straight came out of the abatement to those individuals. I'm not seeing that we're kind of seeing ourselves bad. Just a little bit.
Anybody else, comments or questions? I guess I don't have a problem with the projects needed. Obviously housings, and when we did our conference, we're playing a lot of the top priorities for people in the community. Some of the top pieces of feedback we get from people is, I wish it was a place for my kids to live or when they get their first job or, you know, the partner ride is really nice to have out here by QuikTrip. So people can still commute to town without transportation if they didn't have it. So it's more of those projects that this is, it's just not that property, nothing's going to happen with that property.
Without it.
Without it.
And it's going to improve the city.
Basic work. Anybody, any comments for anybody? We'll close the public hearing. We have a resolution in front of us to approve the tax abatement. I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Resolution passes, Linda, thank you. Thanks, Mike. Appreciate your information and work all out for us, Mike.
There should probably be a motion and a second to approve the development agreement. If you have a copy of that.
It's further down.
It's further down. Is that okay?
I should, I should shut up. I'm sorry.
No, I asked you. You're fine.
I was actually going to suggest that they maybe just do that.
Go ahead.
Yeah. We wouldn't have to come back to it then.
Okay.
And then that, that way Mike could be comfortable leaving.
Okay, so L1A, the big little boy, tax abatement agreement. So that was next in the package in our information, but it's down together. Any questions on that? I mean, that's pretty much it. I'll make the motion to approve that.
I'll second it.
Thanks, Dan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Carries? I'll thank you, Mike. Travel safely home. Full business appendix to the compass agreement.
Yes, so this is just letting you know the other cities that chose to participate in this particular wind shake product and what percentages each of the participating cities are purchasing. If you have questions beyond that, we'd have you attend to them later for your information.
Suggests me a motion to approve that agreement, is that correct? On my.
On the 23th, you'll send it. You know what, we'll just go with that.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the appendix. So moved. Thanks, Dwayne. A second. Thanks, Mel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Carries? Number 2, resolution for the Zumbrow Water Trail.
Yes. We were approached by the folks from Orinoco. It's kind of a spearheading project among, I think they may have somewhere between 10 and 12 cities along the Zumbrow River for tributaries. And because we're good neighbors of a city that also is on the tributary to the Zumbrow, that we would participate in putting together a master plan for the Zumbrow Water Trail. And this is the next step in that process. I think we put in, we provided like $150,000 and then Zumbrow Watershed District, it disbanded and made a contribution to cover the rest of the cost of the master plan. So they're ready to move forward.
We've already funded that. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
I like that motion.
Thanks, Dan. A second?
Second.
Thanks, Dwayne. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries, Linda. G, fund 384 close out. Nancy, you want to?
Yeah, you do. You will update on that.
Nancy's source finding structure for the city of Cassin. We have a debt service fund that's come to the end of its life for its city purposes. We have debt that we normally break out between water, sewer, storm, electric if needed, and then usually the street portion. So over the years, we essentially assess a little extra in it. We have an extra $30,000. But we're legally required to use those funds only for that particular debt service. As it turns out, there's a piece, there's two more years left, I think, of the water service portion of that debt. And so the proposal is to use the $30,000 that's remaining to pay for the water service portion and then clean that out and zero it out. But then to keep the cash flows net on the water side, we'll use those water funds that they would have paid for the debt and use it for another good purpose. In this case, transferring that to the construction fund for 2017 street assessment project, which we never borrowed about $400,000 because we were originally trying to standard the $10 million limit. So the net effect of the water fund would be zero. And it'd be an opportunity to close out that account using it for its legal reinsurance.
Thank you. Any questions for Nancy? Thanks for that, Nancy, appreciate it. Did anybody understand that? The swap, the offer of that. Okay. Entertained a motion to approve.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Bonnie. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries, Linda. Mayor's report, I just have a couple of things. While Nancy's still here, I know she has to run out. I just wanted to publicly tell Nancy, thank you for the day that we had the electricity go out south of town here that's served by Peoples, the trailer court, and the south port without power. And we're kind of scrambling for places for people to go for a warm place to stay because we didn't know how long it was going to be. So she put together with the help of the fire chiefs and she was in contact with Matt Moss of the county. But it came back that we opened the library for a period of time. Nobody took advantage of it, but word was out to those communities that they could do it. So I just wanted to thank you for picking that up and doing that that day.
Okay, well, it's a, it's a city shelter. So we happen to have some plans already in place to deal with this. And so we learned a lot even from that experience. And I think what you said is really important. It really gave certain individuals in town peace of mind knowing that they could tell others where to go, particularly the Windsor Court. They were very concerned about the residents losing heat. And so just knowing that they could come. But, but yes, it's an concerted effort. You know, in the future, it'll probably fall to the fire chief working in conjunction with the county as to when to activate the shelter. But given everything that was happening that day, we were able to give it all. So thanks to everybody who was involved to sharing the information.
Thank you for doing that. The breakfast tomorrow at the school, the thank you breakfast is tomorrow morning, 6:45. I'm going to be out of town, so I won't be able to go. So if anybody wants to go to represent, they'll usually have some posters you can grab for the city. So matter of that. An update, Monday morning, some folks from Tranty Real Estate flew into town, the owners of the property, to kind of just give us an update on what they were thinking and then asking a lot of questions as far as what the city's opinion was for the property and that type of thing. So I think it was a pretty positive conversation. They asked a lot of questions. Apparently, you know, they had a couple of real estate professionals with them. In other cities where they've done business with the real estate professionals, some cities have put up roadblocks to say you can't or can't do this with the building. And basically, we just reinforced to them that anything you want to do with the building that fits with the current planning and zoning for that area, the zoning for the area, you can do it. There's way nothing the city has to do with it or we're not going to tell you you can't. If it's outside of that, then they have to go through the conditional use permit process and planning and zoning. So we made sure they knew who to contact, to contact Teresa, that planning and zoning when the meetings were in council meetings and so. It was a pretty positive conversation. They're working with two real estate professionals. I don't know if they're going to pick one. We don't know how that's going to go, but they've got 40 companies that they're going to present to them. So they're, they're on the move to either sell or lease that building to a tenant. But they're, they're open to entertain either option. So they're willing to sell or lease to a tenant. So if anybody knocks on our door looking for a space, it's 36,000 square feet and we have the contact information. So it's a good conversation and very nice people. And they were very, several times accommodated to say that they want to make sure they're good neighbors in the city of Cassin. So that was encouraging. And then I've got Arbor Day proclamation. Is that what this says? Okay, Arbor Day proclamation. Whereas the health of the people is tied to the health of their forests and whereas trees and forests improve our physical health by cleaning the air, reducing exposure to sun's UV rays and decreasing temperatures during the summertime. And whereas childhood asthma rates are lower in urban communities that have a higher density of trees and whereas trees and forests improve our mental health by reducing stress and increasing concentration. And whereas in 50 years, one tree provides $62,000 worth of air pollution control. And whereas forests create high quality drinking water by acting as a natural filter. And whereas getting a daily dose of trees is healthy for all Minnesotans. And whereas each year, on the last Friday in April and throughout the month of May, Minnesotans pay special tribute to rural and community trees and all natural resources and dedicate themselves to the continued vitality of our state's forests. Now therefore, I as mayor of the city of Cassin do hereby proclaim Friday, April 26th, 2019, as Arbor Day in the city of Cassin. And urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. Further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. So be it proclaimed.
Thank you.
Did you get that recorded?
I did.
Good. No administrative personnel, K1, hire administrative assistant.
So way over here to go for help. We had an open access committee in the city hall. We chose to utilize manpower to help us identify candidates. Amy Johnson has been with us for quite some time and shown herself to be professional, capable, able to learn. And she has a lot of potential for service to the city. So I'm recommending that we hire Amy Johnson as a city employee to fill the administrative position.
And personnel committee, Dwayne and I met with Teresa before the meeting, but our personnel meeting, they had the numbers all work out. And just for the two recently elected, that we originally did this through manpower to be able to vet out an employee versus bringing them on right away. And what do you think, was it just one?
We actually had three people in that seat.
So it protected us, the city, with, you know, our labor unit and bargaining unit to get somebody in right away. This is a great way to bring them in and I think she's doing a fantastic job, so. Thank you. Any questions for the administrator in that? Entertained a motion to approve the hearing.
At the recommendation of the city administrator, I have a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Thanks, Mel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. L, development agreements. B, Thompson addition.
I did not get that one finished prior to the meeting today, so you did not get that.
Okay.
I did get the Stone Ridge Second Agreement done and over to Mr. Marty and David Massey, or David Martin from Massey. That did not get in your packet, obviously. They just had a look at that today. I forwarded that to Teresa. I don't have copies with me. But I can certainly send you, I can email you each of those. It's similar to the development agreements that we've done in the past. They each are, each development has its own, you know, small things that are different. And this one, it's a regional stormwater pond that is unique to this development at least. So the changes that you see deal with that for the most part. So the changes that you will see.
Okay. So B is B. Thompson addition, correct?
Correct.
And so the Stone Ridge Second Edition, is that still actionable? We don't have the copies. Does it need to be done tonight? I mean, is that?
We plan to break the ground in a couple of weeks.
So none of that needs to be done tonight? So the only change, because we have the, with the storm pond, we were waiting for, there was like an option A and option B, right? That hasn't changed.
Correct.
That's still the same options.
And we do have the documentation.
Right.
Yeah, for the option agreement. For the even. Yeah. They did provide us with that signed agreement. I believe we referenced that in the development agreement.
Okay, that was my big concern about making sure that that's solid so there's no uncertainty on either party's part of it. We thought this would happen or you thought this would happen.
The only issue I guess I have with the wording is I was under the impression with our past meetings that the city was going to take the lead on the regional pond. The development agreement words it where it's my responsibility and I thought that we were going to set money aside to pay for our portion of it and the city would be doing it as a city project.
Well, that wasn't discussed at the planning and zoning. It was discussed at the council meeting, I believe, two weeks ago, right? Or was it a month ago?
It was a month ago. It was a preliminary class.
Yeah. Yeah, and exactly what you just said is you had said that you would put money aside for that portion of it. I, and I would have to go back to the recordings as to what agreements we made as far as the city taking the lead, because I don't recall.
I don't recall that. I, I could be wrong, but I don't recall that.
I believe that Brandon did indicate that he would get in touch with the county regarding whether or not that was a wetland.
That was the hangup at the time.
Right.
Was the wetlands.
Yes. And so the option to then hold funds aside for the regional pond would be determined at the time, not be determined that that plot could be developed. You know that it wasn't like a wetland. So there might be just an extra little twist up there.
So what does that mean exactly?
I think we are, so some of us are taking the lead since Brandon is going to be the one working out the wetland issue initially with the county.
Okay, that's what I just want to make sure of. The same thing with option A and option B is I don't want there to be any uncertainty when we leave tonight that here's what option A is, here's what option B is.
Is that what you meant by taking the lead?
Well, I guess it, to me, it needs to be a city project at that point because.
So how do we? So it's a construction of it.
Right, because otherwise, if it's going to be my project, then I need to just get going on it. Whereas someone needs to take the lead on it and go with it. But since it's a regional pond and we're trying to.
But since it's a regional pond, and we're trying to make one large pond, to me, that should be a city project.
And Brandon's not here.
Our question would be if it's a regional pond that we take the lead on this summer? Because if that's the option, it needs to be done as soon as, otherwise, there's no use, and you break the ground if there's no pond.
Well, and that's the other wording in it, that if it's going to be a city project, then I can't be held up. There's wording in there that the pond has to be completed, obviously, so that we can have a house built. And if the city is going to do the project, then I can't have that wording in there because for whatever reason, if the city didn't have the pond built, then I can't. I can't have my whole development held up.
And I think our issue on that was when we first talked about it, and I, again, have to go back and look at the minutes, was how would we pay for it? Because we didn't budget this. We don't, we don't have funds. I mean, I imagine you don't build a pond for $1,000.
Well, and that's where this, you know, I mean, I'm going to pay for it. I'm paying for it.
Okay. Your portion.
My portion of it.
Your portion of it.
But you don't have to build your portion until you need it, is what I'm...
No, just big enough for yours and your people, okay.
Yeah.
But the city takes the lead.
Right, the city takes the lead and does the engineering.
We're trying to do it with county properties, so then that's where the city was going to try to, right?
Okay.
Secure the right of way and all that from the county.
Can we really approve this until that's cleared up?
Not ever, no.
I, I don't want to slow you down, but I don't want to, I don't want you to interpret that we're taking it without being sure.
Right.
I can read you the minutes from the preliminary class.
Yeah.
Yeah. My commission recommended approval at their meeting on Monday, March 11, 2019. David Martin, Master Survey, stated that the, Mr. Marty is proposing two options for stormwater management for the subdivision. One option is a pond on Shudy's property, and the other is a regional pond passing through Shudy's property that would serve more subdivisions. They feel the regional pond should be headed, designed, and constructed by the city. There's concern of wetlands, and a study would have to be done, and then there would be, and then there would be going to the county and acquiring land. In the meantime, they would like to move forward with the understanding that if regional pond is not constructed, then Marty would put a pond on Shudy's property to serve the Stone Ridge and Stone Ridge 2nd. Councilperson Burton stated that Shudy's property is not of the city, and we have no control over that. We can only approve this if the stormwater issue is satisfied at final flat. Mr. Marty is not opposed to putting the pond on Shudy's property and to be credited when the regional pond is put in, when 16th Street is put in. And that was the conversation at preliminary class.
Okay, so I just have, but how would we ever get a wetland study to acquire property from the county in two weeks?
We couldn't.
I mean, for us to be able, for us to satisfy that agreement that we'll have this, if regional is possible, we'll have it ready so you can build a house. My experience with acquiring land from the county is, you just don't want me to get it.
No, no, this, we don't need it in two weeks. We just need the agreement that you're going to go down that road.
Okay.
No, that, you know, we won't be substantially completed until mid-August, so...
For development?
Right.
Then just start building from there.
So the earliest occupancy is going to be November.
Okay.
At that point, we would need a pond built.
Okay.
I can make those changes, so I can put something together and...
And we do have a, we have a meeting in two weeks, if we want to iron that all out.
I just want to make sure that there's no uncertainty in who's doing what, because that just turns into a, you know, a mess. I don't want, you to not have an idea.
I can put something together and have Mike and Brandon and David all take a look at it, and see if we can't work it out, so it can be approved when we come back next.
Like me, eight percent.
I think that'd be the best course of action for him involved in a way, we should be able to have word back from the county that it's a wetland by then at least, because if it's a wetland, we can't do it.
Right.
Right? I mean, that is just out, that we know it's option A, right?
Correct, to a certain extent.
Right.
I think if you develop wetland, you have to designate...
You have to provide credit.
Yep.
So two weeks, we'll have something ironed out, which you have something back in the county too, and we'll have the dollar amounts on it. Thanks for your patience. Thanks for knowing that, together. Okay, we're going to go into closed session for a little bit. We have a real estate issue to discuss, which that portion will be recorded and retained for three years, and we'll have discussion about litigation updates and those discussions will not be recorded. We'll open the meeting back up when we're finished. We'll keep the recording on right now.
I'm going to just give it a little break so that I can separate it.
Okay.